Okay, I guess we, if we could get everybody's attention, we'll go ahead and, and get started so that, I guess, Mr. Alexander, what time is the dinner gonna be here?
No dinner tonight.
Well, you couldn't get your own, took him money of the money. We know how that feels, so, just kidding. We gotta start off with a little humor here. Um, I really appreciate everybody coming and showing interest tonight. This is really a big deal, I think, for, for everybody, city council and school board. And, you know, I think it's a great opportunity to come together and, you know, let's get these problems, or maybe not even problems, just a couple of issues that we have resolved so that we can, can move forward with these projects. Um, before we start, is there anything that anybody would like to say, or is there something that, Rita, is there anything that we could...
Uh, the only thing that we ask is when you speak, speak into the microphone, uh, would be very helpful. This is being streamed, uh, live, and then, of course, we archive it on the website, so, um, just be aware. You're being taped, so, uh, so if you would speak into the, uh, microphone, that would just be real helpful.
Well, I know we've, um, everybody has an agenda. We'll try to move as quickly as possible. I know the second item on the agenda is the recommendation of capital projects from the, I guess, from the city council side. And I think when we look at the projects, I don't think anybody could argue that these projects all need to be done, and if Dr. May would write us a big check, we would have them all done, right?
Right.
And he didn't clarify cashing, did he? He just said, "Write it."
And really, I think what had, had been a concern of the council, and I've expressed this to Rita, Bill, and Dr. May, and I guess Catherine and Connie as well, is every, I shouldn't say everyone, but a lot of people have made this bond issue a, an issue of whether you're for a stadium or against an ath- uh, for a complex or against an athletic complex, and that's really what it's not. I think that everyone that I've talked to, as far as the city council goes, and in our meetings, if you look at the minutes of our meetings, that's really, nobody's really ever come out and said that we don't need an athletic complex. I think that's a given, that that's gonna be a great thing for everybody. So I would really, myself, I'm not even gonna talk about that. I'm gonna talk about the other two projects that, that are on the table, because I think everyone could agree that if we redo TA Dugger, it's gonna be very costly. I think, Mr. Williams, I think I saw him somewhere, hiding, as always, hiding from us.
Or if you wanna get, right?
But, um, I think when you look at the numbers, it is mathematically not feasible, so that's why I'd really rather even not talk about the option for the stadium unless somebody else wants to. What I wanted to talk about a little bit was TA Dugger versus the high school and band room, and I know everyone has their personal opinion, so I had, you know, talked to Rita, talked to Phil about a couple things that could be possibilities, and you, because it may not be an option. But I know we talked about, when this started, Mr. Alexander, when did we start talking about all this? I mean, 2011, 2012? The, the main driver of this was the needs at TA Dugger, and I won't even say extra classrooms, I will say ADA accessibility and the possibility of getting overcrowded. So that's when we got to work and tried to, to come together as a consensus as far as making something happen at TA Dugger. And then, you know, it developed into the high school and band room, as well as the athletic complex. So I didn't know if there's a possibility, you know, we, I think it's a committee that tied a certain dollar amount to this athletic complex, and with the funds that are left and possibly any donations and contributions to the city, make something happen at TA Dugger as well. Maybe we can't build the extra classrooms that we need, and if we're not overcrowding, maybe we don't need them right now. But is there something we can do at TA Dugger as far as ADA accessibility, as far as bathrooms, as far as things that need to be done, so that we're not just leaving that school? I know there was a letter that ended yesterday in the paper that not to hold TA Dugger hostage. Well, that's not what the plan is. The plan is to get something done at TA Dugger, because that's what we had originally done this bond issue for, was for something at TA Dugger. 'Cause I mean, I think I could easily say, and we have city council here, that this would have never come to even a vote at city council had TA Dugger not been the driving force of this. I mean, quite frankly. And that's really, that's my proposal, and, and we'll move on, and let Rita talk a little bit about the overview of the capital projects that we had.
Yes, happy to do that. Um, these projects, like Kurt said, we've been looking at them for over four years. Um, the, uh, current administration has been in place, Ms. Armstrong, come up and join us, we got plenty of spots for you. Um, the current administration has been in place for eight years, and this is the second board of education, and actually second kind of, uh, city council that's been in place. Um, we spent countless hours assessing our needs and looking at the most cost-effective ways to meet the school system's capital improvement needs. And in April of 2011, the board of education voted three to to accept the current three projects. And we have not wavered in our conviction that these three projects need to be completed, and I thank the mayor for, uh, uh, for echoing that sentiment. Actually, I noticed that a year ago today, several members of the city council, the school board, city officials, school board administrators, and members of the police department boarded the school bus, and we all took a tour of TA Dugger and Elizabethan High School, uh, to talk about the needs and the vision of these projects. So I think it's kind of perfect that we're meeting again, of course, a year later, but we're still talking about it, but that was a year ago today. I'm telling you, boy, you guys do. But that was kind of interesting that that happened a year ago today. So, uh, one of the things that we tried to do, and we've killed several trees, uh, keeping our board of education and your, uh, council in the loop, and we've wanted to work together as partners in this two proj- in these three projects. So, brief, brief overview. Uh, the Elizabethan Athletic Complex, um, it has changed locations from where we started in 2011. We now feel the best place for it is to locate it, uh, beside the baseball field, in the corner of the student parking lot, beside the railroad tracks, which now with the railster trails is gonna be a very nice thing to have that run right in front of the stadium. Uh, current seating is for thirty-five hundred. It would include, uh, two concession restroom areas. Uh, this would be considered an outdoor, an outdoor classroom for the band, and, uh, we would need to replace parking in the unused area beside the track that we're gonna lose to the placement of the stadium. Um, the EHS, uh, music room slash classroom renovation is the other, one of the other projects. Um, one of the things at the high school, we have to do a lot of specialized classrooms. Uh, the aviation requires specific things, uh, the health sciences classes require certain things, uh, woodworking, uh, culinary arts, and really, the band and music room is no different. They require certain things. So, uh, we would like to build, uh, a room for them that would meet their needs a little bit better than the converted, um, I think that that was a, actually, a mini theater when it was built. So, we would build, the idea is to build the band room and the choir department, which they want to call a music room, I think that's what Mr. Elliott said it would be called. And then we would take the current band room and renovate that for four academic classrooms. And I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but currently at Elizabethan High School, we have three teachers who do not have classrooms. So, this would really help out the high school tremendously. And again, the addition at TA Dugger. Uh, currently, I believe we're still only using, using the conceptual drawings that Mr. Williams, uh, drew up for us quite a while. After the funding was, uh, given at five million, we really haven't spent any more money doing anything for those plans. But basically, there would be a minimum of six classrooms at TA Dugger. There'd be two sets of bathrooms, uh, on the main and the second floor. Uh, it would make, uh, the, uh, TA Dugger ADA compliant, because it would make, uh, the upstairs would go run the whole area, and therefore, kids using, uh, having classrooms in the crow's nest could, uh, be able to get there easily. Um, bathrooms, again, are a huge issue, and having new bathrooms essentially located is gonna be a, a really good thing. Um, we will need to demolish and remove the current grandstands at Brown Children's Stadium, and that's expensive. That's gonna be about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, and also, one of the things we have to remember is that we really cannot do anything at TA Dugger until the stadium is complete, because obviously, we don't wanna tear down the grandstands when we're still having to use the stadium. So, brief overview, athletic complex, um, the, uh, music room at Elizabethan High School would give us four classrooms. The TA Dugger addition would give us a minimum of six classrooms, two bathrooms, and make it ADA compliant, and really meet all the needs there, so. In a nutshell, that are, that's the project.
Okay, I just wanna speak briefly about the committee and the reasons or the, how we came up with the recommendation that we came up, that we brought before the board. And the board voted on it four to one to accept the recommendation of the committee, and it was very challenging. Uh, we met three times over, of course, in about a month and a half, had some, uh, really good, uh, conversations, and quite a lot of dialogue, a lot of different opinions, a lot of information gathering to try to see how to best spend the five million dollars that the city was very gracious to, to go to that for us and make the half cent sales tax available to us. And, uh, so we came with, uh, we wanted to try to complete two of the three projects. And so we looked at all the projects, and you put them together and tried to see, okay, what is best for the community, and also, what can we afford? So looking at doing TA Dugger and the stadium, the new sports complex, and I, I very early wanted to do these two projects, because they are, they're linked because of the, the addition, going where it is at TA Dugger with the grandstands, which we all know are aging and are gonna need some attention in the near future anyway. They're kind of linked, so that was where we would like to focus, but the funding was just not available. Five million dollars will not complete those two projects. So you look at TA Dugger and the band and classrooms, as to try to complete those two projects. What, looking at those, you, you, the addition goes to the back, that's the recommendation, the best place for addition at TA Dugger, which complicates with the grandstands. And you look at possibly taking the grandstands down and renovating the, the existing stadium, and it's just not economically feasible to do that. It's not really cost-effective to go in there when you can go and remodel. We got Mr. Williams and his group to do a study for us to see, you know, the, the possibilities of renovating and, and, and doing that concept, and it just, it just made more sense to go down and build a brand-new stadium as opposed to going in there and renovating, uh, the existing stadium. So it comes to the last two projects, which was the stadium and the band room and classrooms, and after a lot of discussion, it made sense to the committee, out of two of the three projects, those two are the ones that we could come in close to the five million dollar money that we had been funded. So that's how the committee, through a lot of, a lot of discussion, a lot of challenging discussions, came up with the recommendation that we did, that we brought before the, the school board, and the, and the school board voted four to one, and that's where we stand today. So, uh, naturally, if we could go back and then the committee could redo this with a little additional funding, I think the committee would possibly come back to the TA Dugger project and do the sports complex. But there again, there's funding issues there, and, um, like I say, that's just where we are at this point in time. I would be glad to answer any questions that anybody would have as to the recommendation, and with the recommendation, we didn't try to leave any of the projects out, you know. The TA Dugger project, we were in hopes that in the near future, maybe going back and revisiting the bond market with the original bond, the six-point-five million that was done, what was that, done in 2008?
Yeah, two zero.
That possibly in, you know, two or three years, that that would be paid down somewhat, be the principal payments would be paid down, and restructure that bond to possibly go back and complete, whatever the third project being that we didn't complete through the first phase that we're trying to do. So, uh, you know, hopefully, the interest in the market will still be pretty reasonable, and if interest rates goes up, that means the economy's doing well. If the economy's doing well, our half-cent sales tax may increase for us and give us some extra money or some excess money. Uh, I know the original bond was for six-point-five million dollars. Uh, I think in this process, we were originally approved for six-point-six million dollars, and the funding came to five million. So if we could go back to that six-point-five original, like the first bond, that would free us money, and we could do TA Dugger and the complex, and that would help us move forward. And I think there's a real possibility in the near future that we could do the band room and the classrooms at Brown School. So, uh, I'd like for everybody to think about that a little bit and see if maybe that would be a possibility. And that's where the, we, and I understand that, you know, we've liked, everybody wants a new stadium, everybody seems to, the people that I talk to say, you know, we'd like to have a new stadium, and I know the children would. And, but we don't wanna put these other things on the back burner, but I don't wanna go, and I can't speak for all the other board members or things, I, I don't wanna go and just Band-Aid TA Dugger and Band-Aids and things at the high school and just complete one of the three projects. I would like to see us complete at least two of these three projects through this process. I hope that helps a little. Be glad to answer any questions. I don't have all the answers, but we've got, you know, Mr. Williams and Mr. Band-Aids, they spent a lot of hours and a lot of time with their drawings and readings and come up with estimates of what these projects would cost. So, I, you know, I guess I'm the last person. I'd like to open it up if any council members, I know Jeff, you and I discussed, and you wanted to, you didn't have a problem with the recommendation, but you were concerned about future projects and the funding of future projects, and, and wanted some assurance that, you know, that there would be something there. The mechanism, we've got a wonderful mechanism in this half-cent sales tax to help generate the revenue that we need to help move these projects forward. Uh, and I really think that in the near future, with maybe, you know, going back and restructuring the original bond, and, and, you know, Jerome, you know a lot more about this, restructuring bond markets than I do, but, you know, it may not be feasible, and I could think that that would be a way to hopefully fund a future project.
And I'll just kinda, if you want me to, Jerome, hit on this a little bit, where we went and ran some calculations after we threw that idea out there, you know, about what would happen, let's say, in five years, if we went back and restructured. Right now, we use the revenue constraint of seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, which was a conservative view, because we wanted to leave money there for you guys to do other things. So let's say, if we look, the problem that we have, though, the bonds that we just did for 2013, we don't start, we're paying interest only until, really, two thousand and twenty-one. And really, we're not paying any significant principal. We pay a maximum, I would really even say, two thousand and twenty-four. September first, two thousand and twenty-four, we're making our first substantial principal payment of five-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars.
These are on the bonds that you took out.
But we're not talking about the recent two.
Right, well, I'm just saying, you gotta give that as backup, because right now, we're, we're still gonna have, even ten years from now, we're still gonna have all of that principal outstanding, because all we're doing is paying interest only right now. Now, if we look at the two thousand and eight bonds, we do have several of those coming off every year, but if you, after running the numbers, we went and ran the numbers, say we do this in two thousand and eighteen, and let's say, for example, interest rates are four percent. Four-point-oh percent, which is fairly conservative. They may be a little higher, so we ran it two different ways. If we ran it at four percent on the bonds that have been paid back on under the two thousand and eight series, you have a net present value of right at two million dollars. You factor in the bond cost, that's gonna net about one-point-eight-five million. So about one-point-eight-five million is gonna be your net at an, an all-in cost of four percent. That's two thousand and eighteen. The problem with that, and I don't know if it's necessarily a problem, but what that utilizes is your full seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars that we were talking about. Now, say interest rates creep up, and I have a feeling when interest rates start moving, they're gonna move. It may, it won't be this year, I don't think, but it may start being next year. So by the time five years rolls around, we may be back in a normal interest rate environment, with the economy picking up and things like that. Interest rates going up is typically a good thing for the economy and for, you know, things like that. Say that the interest rates go to five percent, say a one percentage point difference, then you're looking at pretty much net proceeds of one-point-six million. So my problem there, and that's using the seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand, so that would pretty much max out your sales tax. Can that in five years do the TA Dugger project?
But the other side of that, if the economy's improving, hopefully, the half-cent sales tax will bring in more than the seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, which may help offset the interest and may get us back up closer to the, you know, I'm just, we're thought, we're just...
Well, and, and that, that would be great if it was the case, but I mean, quite frankly, our economy here the last couple of years has done well. Stock market's up two-hundred percent in five years. You know, our economy's doing pretty well. Our population in Elizabethan isn't gonna change much, you know, we really can't grow much to the west, can't grow much to the east. So by utilizing that seven-sixty, I think that's, that's gonna be, I don't know, Jerome, do you feel that it's gonna be a fair number, or are we gonna shoot?
Well, we're being conservative, because your problem runs, what happens is, if you overpromise your sales tax, if you do have a stock, then, then you have a crucial portion. And, you know, if it comes in over, that's great, and of course, you've always got the benefit of that, but if it comes under, those payments still have to be made, no matter what.
And this would, I need to emphasize too, that by doing this in five years, this would maximize twenty-five years of the seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand, and there really, you're not gonna, even if sales tax goes up to eight-hundred thousand, there's really no way to get any other substantial capital projects done in the next twenty-five years. And that's what we were looking at, and that's why it just drives me nuts when people make this about being for a stadium or being against a stadium. This is really about affordability and using your money wisely and looking down the road, because twenty-five years, I don't know about you all, I'm not gonna be here, thank goodness. But somebody's gonna be here to have to deal with these, the funding problems, and, you know, there's only one other way that you all can get more money, because we've maxed out by state law the sales tax, and that is rates of property taxes. And that's really the only other way between sales tax and property tax.
And, and I agree with you, that through this bond issue of five million, that's seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand, and we'll bring it in roughly seven-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. With the half-cent sales tax, so there's a cushion there, and there'll be some excess, and I, you know, I don't know what the numbers could possibly be, but I know through this six-and-a-half million dollar bond issue that was done through that, there's been some excess sales tax along with that. I guess maybe what I'm asking is there a possibility that with this five million, to get a little extra money so that we can address, seriously address the issues at TA Dugger? And, you know, it'd be nice to go in and revamp some of the existing restrooms. I know they need, they need some attention for that, but there's a lot of other issues there at TA Dugger. I would just like to see us complete two of the three projects. You know, I don't want, I'd hate to see us, you know, you know, and thinking back to with the committee process, you know, and there's an option that we could have thought about. You know, I don't want, I'd hate to see us, you know, you know, and, and thinking back to with the committee process, you know, and there's an option that we could have thought about, but nobody even considered it. You know, take the five, whole five million and build an elaborate stadium and do nothing else. I mean, they really took a lot of consideration, how can we complete two of the three projects? You know, we could have took the five million with some donations and went to the original track and did the track, the stadium and, and done something really nice. But we didn't want to exclude, cause we know there's a real need for that. We, we want to do the classrooms and we want to do the band, you know, we want, like you all, we want to do them all.
One of the things we have to remember is with both of these projects, we're looking at building classrooms, which has been something key. Um, and I think it's just for us, it's been a matter of however much money you give us, we want some classrooms, be it at the high school or at TA Dugger, because we've got to have them. I mean, you know, it would be a shame to have this money and walk away with no new classrooms. So I just think we have to be determined that, you know, that we complete two class, we, we complete two projects. The thing that scares me a little bit about not doing the, the music room at the high school and, and putting some money at TA Dugger, and Mr. Weems can address this more than, than I can. Once we start at TA Dugger, and we only have, let's say we have a million five, who knows what we're gonna get into? And, uh, we have to have some centrally located restrooms, those restrooms are not in good locations. And, and the plans in place, even if we can't get to everything right now, they're the right things to do and, you know, and I understand what you're saying about we don't want to max things out. But up until about, you know, a few years ago, we had never, the school system had not made any improvements unless the county did something and then we got that percentage. I mean, this bond, a few years, you know, in two thousand and eight's first time that the city's had to really contribute to a building project in a long, long time. So there was a gap, and there was that time where, let's say we built on it east side, uh, I think in about ten years ago, that little addition. But we've not asked the city and the city's not had to really do anything to help the school system out. So you and I were talking about not planning ahead. Well, we've been addressing that for the last, you know, few years. There's always gonna be more things come up, but what we have right now are things that are gonna really take care of TA Dugger and Elizabethan High School for decades. I mean, they should, they should be in good shape. Um, the elementary schools, of course, you know, there's always, there's always growth, but, you know, they're kinda limited by space too. You know, we're kinda landlocked with some of those buildings. So there's always gonna be the need for other things, and that's always gonna be out there. But at some point, we've got to pull the trigger and do something because that bond money's been sitting there since what, September, October? And we haven't done anything with it, you know? And we've missed out on getting a stadium for the kids for this year, for this upcoming school year, which is just heartbreaking. And we've got to do something with it because what, so what we hear a lot is you've got, the money's there and it's just burning daylight. We've got to make a decision, we've got to, we've got to spend that money because, you know, there's gonna be a payment come up on it, and we haven't done anything with it yet. So I, I would like to see us move forward. I mean, I, I still believe, you know, if we're gonna do five million's what we've got, we'd have a plan in place, the board approved it four one, we need to do that. If you guys wanna give us some more money, we can look at something else. If we're all decided that the stadium's the way to go, then release that money to us and let us get started on that. And we can talk about this other stuff, but I think we, we owe it to the city to spend this money. I mean, we've got it, we need to spend it because it's not, it's not doing any good unless, I hope you're making some interest on it somewhere. But, you know, when that payment comes around, it's gonna be awfully hard for us to, to use half cent sales tax money to pay for, uh, you know, a payment that we've not gotten used. So I, I would like to see us do something.
What is the current interest use? You've got that list, what, how much goes to, uh, principal right now and how much goes to interest?
Uh, off the new bond issue, there's nothing that goes to principal until September first, two thousand and twenty-one, and that's only twenty thousand dollars.
Is it monthly payment?
Would we pay that quarterly, Jerome?
Either annually or we pay it, uh, semi.
Do you know what the payment is? How much are we sitting on that? How much is going to waste right now?
Eighty-nine thousand dollars, eighty-nine, that's seven hundred and twenty-three.
So, you know, we're talking about being conservative of seven twenty versus seven sixty, but we're paying interest right now because we are immobilized. We're paying eighty, ninety thousand dollars in an interest only payment to not utilize it. Whatever, you guys can use it for something else.
Whether you're building or not building, the same interest payment is there, so the money is there.
Money's there, but the interest is going towards something nobody's using, and yet we're, we're bearing a cost, so let's decide something, first, first point. Second thing is, you know, for, for many years, we've had the capital projects planned, drawn out, and it's morphed and changed. But when I first came on, we started talking about how we could do all the needs for the long term, you know, pie in the sky going. When we went before you, it was our clear understanding that there's no way you're gonna get nine million dollars from us. I mean, we still have it, and we met again, it was seven million dollars, and, you know, we, we can't do that. But we thought we were gonna be able to do it at six point six, and we think we did a good job. And I appreciate the work that the committee did outside because they got other people involved from the community. And we kind of found out that, you know, we really can be good stewards of your money. And so we were trying to be good stewards, but we still didn't have enough to do all three. And I think that's what you've heard us say over and over. Um, but we still wanna be good stewards. And so as part of that, if we were to start it, one of the things I heard from the committee was if we start at TA Dugger, not only do we not know what we get into, but we can shut down and do a little bit at a time inside. When you're doing a remodel and it's indoors, you can, now, you can't always do a little bit, but you could do one or two classrooms and stop if you run out of money. Cause you're indoors, you've got a building that's functioning and you can do it in that manner. It can be a little, as the monies come up. If you do a stadium, you can't do a little bit at a time, it's an all or none project. And so part of my thought process, so that you understand about why that became priority is, that was nineteen seventy-three. And you're talking twenty-five years, that's been that long, in fact, it's been longer. Um, so the fact is, they had the same discussions that long ago about building the stadium, moving it to the other campus. But it truly was not a priority in seventy-three or eighty-three or ninety-three, it's starting to become a priority. And you talk about, and with, in good faith, you know, we're talking about what are the catastrophic things? A catastrophic thing for this community, I think, or it depends how you just describe catastrophe, but if that stadium becomes condemned or is unable to be utilized, we're gonna have to bring it up to code. And we're gonna spend three point five, three point four, I think we've discovered, million to bring that stadium up if we touch it. So if the home stands begin to fall down, and we've had, uh, an incident where a cheerleader from an opposing team was standing near the wall, walked away, and a chunk of the wall fell off and almost hit her. I mean, we have issues there. And that was brought to our attention after the game, and we made sure it wasn't an issue, it wasn't, but, you know, there is gonna come a point where it becomes critical if we don't act soon. And we aren't gonna have the opportunity to have two, three, four million dollar bond issues again for twenty-five years, it sounds like. So part of what went into my decision-making in the vote for the four one to approve this was that I feel like that we have access to a larger capital due to the interest rates being where they are, the ability to do the bond. So the stadium moves up in priority, not because it's necessarily better than a classroom, but simply because it's, makes financial good sense to put something that you're not gonna be able to do piecemeal fashion. Now, I don't wanna do TA Dugger piecemeal fashion, I'd like to get all, all three projects. But we had to prioritize and, and stra, and strategically find a way to do that. While the builders are on site, it'll be arguably, there'll be some infrastructure that they have to have in order to build that will allow them, I believe, to continue a project at the high school and complete another of one of the pretty high priority goals. But the thing is, all the goals are starting to catch up, and they're getting to be priority. If you plan ahead, you know, um, the Seven Habits kinda book where you plan ahead, we're waiting till everything's in the urgent category and we're gonna be in trouble. And that's our fear, is that we're getting to a point where things are gonna be urgent. And right now, they're not urgent because we're still planning, but we see that if we don't utilize it that way, at least I see that that's where, what went into my decisions that, um, if we don't move that direction soon, we're gonna be behind the eight ball when time comes and it becomes priority, and it's not gonna be, we need a little, it's gonna be, we're, we're out, we're gonna have to travel for that. I think we'll have an unhappy community because I believe, as I've said, that this community is a bedroom community, that people live here and they love to live here. And part of the things they really like is an active and vibrant community service school system that has a good football team, good band, you know, and has an engaged place for people to go and meet. Um, Mr. Little's, uh, well, actually, there were three people that signed on that, all the administrative staff at, at the TA Dugger, you know, they, they told us how much the, the bandroom or their, um, auditorium is used by the community. I believe if you will think through how much that stadium is used for things beyond the stadium, it rises in priority to the city citizens as much as well. I think you raise, I think it raises property values. Don't know that it raises taxes, but by raising property values, you increase revenue because people wanna live here and because they wanna have their families move here. And that's how you can raise some without raising taxes, is by encouraging with a vibrant school system for people to wanna live in the community. But I hear people a lot of times outside of our region talk about that, it's a pretty location, but that stadium really needs to be redone, that's been followed down. Of course, they know we're talking about it and they're bringing it up to you, you know, um, in fairness. But the, uh, the projects aren't prioritized in basis of, you know, like you said, I don't think it's good to talk, to talk about classrooms or stadiums because it's really a big plan that we've kinda had laid out. We had to prioritize how much money do we have, and we don't have nine million, which is what I think we wanted originally. Then we said, we can't do that, you know, that's a, that's a champagne budget. So we kinda worked our way down and said, you know, what can we really afford? I think we came as close as we could, so we're kinda frustrated by the process here at this point and looking for, how can we make the, how can we make anything move forward and do it right? Cause it, to be a good steward, we can't just have to do something either. So we have to pick something to do. Now, as far as classrooms go, we haven't had this discussion at our board level, but it's been a burning kind of a thought in my mind. Um, there are creative ways by which to use facilities, and it's not a popular thing, and it would be very unpopular and probably not, not a good thing to do. Um, and I don't think this is where you wanna head with it, but it's, if it's about having additional space, sometimes you can extend time or have staggered start times and utilize facilities more efficiently. It's what a lot of buildings do when they need space, rather than have everybody come at one time and leave at the same time, we stagger the time so that everybody utilizes the same spaces. That's not ideal. We'd love to have a classroom and have the same thing, and I think that's our real goal, is to continue the status quo with teachers having their own classrooms as much as possible, especially in those that seem to really truly need the resources of classrooms. And as you get into upper grades, that's where we have more and more specialized classroom needs, um, in terms of that. And, and it seems like it's at the extremes, the very lower and the very upper seem to have very specialized needs, particularly as she mentioned, a lot of the, the technical community and, um, classes and, and bands and things like that. Um, we talked with Mr. Elliott and the band members and the support groups for those in the town. And I think that what I hear them say is, you're cutting our revenue source if you don't get that stadium built because that's how we pay for ongoing big ticket items for us as individuals, as parents of band members, a two thousand dollar tuba or whatever is, I don't know what they cost, but they're high. We're getting those only from concession funding. So there's this other kinda micro economy that's going on out there that's not citywide, but this is really affecting a hundred and thirty-six kids every year, you know, year after year, that stadium complex. And, and that little economy could be totally upset by the fact that we had to go away to wait to more away events, to the point that it could cripple their, their program, which is an enormous part of the whole system. Challenging to go out there on a Friday night and count the number of citizens that show up and see how many kids are there. Um, I've estimated at least fifty percent of the school system is involved in one way or the other, and I'm not talking about just the high school, but the system. There's little kids there, there's big kids there, they're all coming together, and that's why that becomes a higher priority in a lot of ways. But it isn't about, you know, athletics is more important than academics, you know? It isn't, it isn't that, it's a part of the whole, it's not something you can fully just separate it out, stick it over here, like you said, you know, it's not, not about a stadium. But that's a big part of the whole thing. And the thing is, we don't have that kinda money available in the near future in a lump sum where it's gonna take to start at that process. And then we are stuck with what to do at TA Dugger if we can't take the home stands down. So we kinda feel like our hands are handcuffed by factors outside of our control, at least that's what I felt.
Let me ask you this, Kurt, and then the possibility, Jerome, what, and this may be an unrealistic request, is there a possibility that we can go back and get additional funding to do TA Dugger and the stadium? That's our two pressing needs. Yes, I'm not trying to make light of the bandroom and classrooms at the high school. I would love to have those, but I think as far as real needs, I think the stadium and TA Dugger are our real needs for our school system. And is there any possibility that we could reach out to you folks and get some additional funding to try to complete those two projects? Because we were approved for six point six, and I appreciate your conservative, I really appreciate your conservative approach with the five million, but we were approved for six point six. And if we got an additional million and made it six million, you know, it would be tight to even complete those two projects at that amount of money. But, you know, that would still leave a little bit of a cushion with the, the sales tax and, uh, I'm not trying to be greedy here, but I'm just trying to figure out a way to complete two of the projects. And then, again, I'm not making, you know, the, the, TA Dugger, we all need, you know, needs the ADA compliance and the bathrooms and, we all know what, we've all done, but is that even a reasonable request? Or something that you guys would even consider, uh, as entertaining thought of getting some additional money to complete those two projects? And we would have to, but I don't know why everybody thinks, well, you're gonna do the stadium, first of all, it has to be done to make room for the additional when we take this, the grandstand. Is that a reasonable request or?
Jerome, what is the process if you did something like that?
Talking about additional, uh, issue, a new bond issue, uh, million dollars, I ran one point five.
Well, I would take the, go back to like the original, six point five of the original, I mean, I thought we might could mirror that one.
Seventy-five thousand dollars additional per year increase, not counting bond costs. And, you know, we're using seven twenty, so seven five would be seven ninety-five.
I don't go that much.
We don't need a million.
If we went a million, could we save a bit, I mean, would it still make us out at seven eighty or?
Because, you know, one of the things that we've not really looked at, because we were focusing so much on the high school, that we do have to consider, we have, I mean, and TA Dugger is the riskiest, is the riskiest project. But we do have to demolish the stadium and remove it, and it's not as simple as just going in there, I'm guessing. And, uh, Mr. Weems is giving me that look like, yeah, it's not gonna be fun.
It's probably gonna be tough.
It's what, yeah, um, because we can't shortcut, you know, anything, but we do have to remove it and we do have to demolish it. And so, you know, if we're looking at TA Dugger, then we're gonna have to factor in that that would have to be done as well.
And if that's not a reasonable request, I understand, you know, cause it's, you know, it's getting us maxed out with the, the monies, the, the half cent sales tax. Then we gotta work with the five million and the two projects that we can complete, with the five million, come closest to completing, stay within budget, is the new stadium and the bandroom classrooms at the high school. I mean, that's, that's kinda where we're at.
Let me ask you some quick questions. As far as, and y'all may know this, Mr. Alexander, I don't know, um, the ADA compliance issues at TA Dugger, is there ever a point to where they come and say, you know, you've been out of compliance this many years? You have to have X done by this period of time, do they do that?
I don't know if there's a mandate, I guess is what you're asking.
It would be compliance, uh, population wise, streetwise, so that's, that's not a problem. Some comments been made, we were, uh, we were outstretched in the elements of the system, that's not true. It would have been the cluster moments that, that, so, that, yes, the state would do that if it wished that way. But they were, they don't talk about building, they just talk about you have to have certain averages in the system. So that, the answer is, they have a benefit, yes, there would be a situation like that, but we don't, we're not in it.
But we've not had any pressure, we've not had any pressure that says, okay.
And we're talking about structure violations or?
We're not, there's not violations.
Uh, non-compliance or stra, uh, that's grandpa.
I think the only time they get excited is when you start doing renovations, then they want it, rather.
Then once you bring up the stadium.
Which was a problem with the stadium.
Yes.
When you start messing, and you start messing with the old stadium, then you have to bring everything up to compliance and, you know.
Part of what I think you're talking about is that TA Dugger, those, those students need new restrooms, and they need centrally located restrooms. The restrooms that, that are there, they work, they're fine.
And they're ADA compliant.
We're not violating anything, but we need to be planning, but it's what we have right now, while it was good enough for a while, we need, those kids deserve better. They deserve that when there's a break, that there is a central, they're centrally located. They deserve that when there's a break, that there is a central, there are centrally located new bathrooms that work better than the ones we have now. If you have a kid that has a classroom, that has a class upstairs in Crow's Nest, you know, that's the, you have to take the stairs beside of the gymnasium. Both my girls, while they were there, had a class upstairs. Both of them had knee injuries. They had to maneuver those steps on crutches. Now, they're not fun on a good day. And we've been very fortunate, no one's been injured. But if we had the new addition, then that would be accessible because we do have an existing elevator. Elevators are expensive. We don't want to, you know, we've got one, it just doesn't reach the entire second level. So that's kind of what we're wanting to do. We need new, we need some more classrooms. We would, it would be so nice to have classrooms that were wired and equipped for the technology that the kids have. You know, we do great. Our maintenance stretches our buildings and they do a great job. But TA Dugger needs some improvements existing to that building. Because we've added things not attached. So we've added a bandroom, we've added a library. Uh, they've broken that old area and made, you know, art room and wood shop. And I think there's some classrooms out there. But TA Dugger needs some new things. They need these classrooms. And it's just a matter of, you know, we're very fortunate that the restroom continue to work, but they're on weird spots. And what we're thinking about doing is going to meet all the needs that TA Dugger has now and in the future. Because we're planning, we're looking ahead. We're not looking at, this is going to fall apart tomorrow. But right now, we can do something to make TA Dugger in shape for years and years and years and years and years to come. Kind of like what we're doing at the high school. We've not done anything at the high school except make it more secure and tear down Stonehenge a few years ago, is what I like to call that crazy little area. And, uh, but, you know, it, they need some classrooms there. So we're looking at, we're looking ahead. You know, Kurt and I were talking the other day. We are looking to the future. And these are things that are going to help make our school system ready for decades to come. And this isn't, we're not banning it. We are looking for, this is going to meet needs. Mr. Van Hus, you know, we've talked over and over again. What we have looked at is going to meet all the needs that we have. We need classrooms, this is a great way to do it. We need restrooms, this is a great way to do it. So it's kind of, this has just been so thought out and looked at from every angle that this just meets our system's needs, much like the additions that we've done previously.
So what you're saying as we speak, we're, we're good on ADA. We don't have any mandated issues that we have to take care of.
Sure, I think you want to, yeah.
We are grandfathered in, we are in compliance. The issue is, we all know that it's not ideal. And if we tried to build a structure to change it right now today, we would not be in ADA compliance.
Right. Because when we renovate, you've got to comply with the current law.
So there's not an issue that, there's an ADA compliance issue out there that we're violating. We're not in that situation.
But originally, that was an issue, that we were not ADA compliant. But we were, correct?
We're not meeting the needs now, especially to address the requests there that under the law, based on the building being built in 1940. They allow, they make us have an elevator for that part of the city.
I think what might be confused a little bit is the location of the addition. And we looked at, you know, putting where it is versus putting it at other locations in, around the complex. And when we did that, it didn't make, this is, the addition in the back is what meant the current ADA compliance if we did an addition. If we were thinking about putting it somewhere else, that's a little confusing. But if we were to locate the addition somewhere other than the, the back of the TA Dugger structure, then we couldn't meet the ADA compliance. And once we started doing an addition or something like that, we would probably be required to meet all the ADA compliance. So you don't have to be in the addition, right? Well, I'm untouched, just still grandfathered. So that's the reasoning behind putting the addition in the rear of the building to meet ADA compliance, which we're probably required to do. And that's when it encroaches with the stadium and causes a conflict there because we don't meet the codes. And I've had some long discussions with Mr. Weems about, you know, this prior to our committees and stuff. Because I was real eager when we found out that the funds were a possibility and there's a possibility we're going to be able to usually have sales tax. I was real eager to do TA Dugger and the stadium. But I found out real quickly that, you know, the funding wasn't available. And, I mean, the amount of money that we received, we couldn't do that. So, uh.
One thing to your point too on this, um, you know, that where things will, where we currently stand, we're meeting, I think we're meeting the needs of our students. But they, by the law, if they were new, if this was new construction, a handicapped child must be able to reach any place that anybody else can. And right now, what we're not able to do is reach the crow's nest. So they're not going to the crow's nest, as I understand it. They're scheduled differently. So, but because we're in compliance, but if we had to renew it, that crow's nest has to be acceptable. Accessible, is that correct, Mr. Weems? And that's one of, and our new plan would make it accessible. One of the issues that we have now is our students have an elevator to access. And to Rita's point about her children, I took crutches to TA Dugger one day. Because I, I, when we were talking about this, I was new on the board and I wanted to know, what's the big deal? School's worked for years and it's not in disrepair by any means. It's a very functional school and it's a part of our community, an icon. So I went up there and I took crutches and I walked around and I timed my bell to see how long it'd take me if I was in one classroom and had crutches and had to get to the restroom. And it's, it's an issue depending on which side you're on because the, the way that they're located is peripheral on the sides. And so you only have an elevator on one side, which means because of the way the girls' classrooms, bathrooms are, they're on the opposite of the elevator. You could flip that, you can move them around, but they have urinals in them. So it's not something that most girls want to use. And, uh, and try to make it humorous. But anyway, so you walk around with the crutches, you know, and you start to go down the stairs, uh, because that's what makes sense. And we haven't had any injuries, but truthfully, they're supposed to go over down to the other side because they have crutches. And so that's hard to do in five minutes. And we can make accessibility options available for those people. Um, and part of our long range goals are to do just that. That, that classroom, if I was a taxpayer sitting out there, I'd be wondering, well, if you don't have any needs, why do you want to build anything new? This has worked well for years for us and I went there and, you know? But things have changed, you know? Uh, air conditioning, heating, those kinds of things came about since that school was built. And we added those. Now we're in an electronic world where people need to learn how to use these or computers. So we use them all in our day to day work. So we need electronic infrastructure. You know, we need some things that bring people into a central location for safety issues, but also for accessibility. So we, that's kind of the goals I, I took out of TA Dugger. But I want to see TA Dugger get brought back up as well, which is why it was disheartening not to get enough to do all three. I know we can't though. And that, or at least that was the answer I heard. So that's why we started supporting, what can we do? And to me, what I was trying to say was, I think we can, for a lesser investment in the future than it would take to do what we really need to do to be able to do that in the future, which is knock down that home stand and be able to make room for it, then we're going to be able, we're going to need to do that piece of me. Or have a larger lump sum. And I don't think a larger lump sum's an option. But maybe it is. If it is, that'd be great. Maybe there'll be more donations once we get rolling. But we're, we're kind of chomping at the bit to get rolling. And I hope if we get rolling, people will come forward and say, I want to support this. See something good. I hope that it'll unify a city towards a building, something exciting for the city. And maybe we'll get some additional funding. Until we move on it, nobody's going to come off the sidelines and start saying, here's what I can do. Because they want to know how much is, you know, needed. Not, not, you know, fund the whole project for private funds, you know?
You all, now speaking about in the future, when you speak of TA Dugger, right? I couldn't really hear you there where I was.
We're just talking about the plans that we have in place, meeting the needs for the future of TA Dugger. So the addition that we've talked about for years on the back of the building, the two-story addition meets TA Dugger's needs for now and for the future. That's what we're talking about, yeah.
Okay, but you haven't looked at the plans that were drawn in 2001 and see how they could be adjusted, readjusted and added to?
Well, they don't, they're, it's not a two-story addition.
Well, I know, but you can make it a two-story.
Well, it's what we've got. What we're doing is one.
Easily. I'm, in studying that, it looks like you would have about the same investment in those plans that we now have in these newer plans that will be on the back of the building.
You're talking about the, it's an addition that's in the back of the building?
Well.
Because that's where we need it?
Yeah, the present day has the back of the building. But the 2000 plans do not. They, they go, uh, in front of the gymnasium and.
That wouldn't be, we couldn't access the elevator. It wouldn't have access, the crow's nest still wouldn't have access to the elevator unless we use the back of the building.
Oh, but you could make it inaccessible.
How? If you're building it on the front?
Just like you did on the other side across from the cafeteria.
You want to, you, you're talking about changing the, the, uh, front of TA Dugger? You want to change the front?
TA Dugger. I know that building well. I spent thirty years there.
But the crow's nest is on the back. It's not on the front. The crow's nest is in the back of the building, it's not on the front.
I taught in that very one of those rooms for about four or five years. So I know what you're talking about, yeah.
I'm not familiar with the previous plans. I'm just, I'm not seeing them.
I don't know why we haven't looked at maybe another option for that building.
Well, I think that's the reason we utilized Mr. Weems. So to give us our options, yeah, so. I don't know.
I was going to say, my understanding was we looked at that. And I did look at those plans from 2000. Though, though I can't, I'm not a builder, but my understanding was we had reassurance that those plans were not functional. Mr. Weems, can you speak to those old ones? Two thousand plans that you drew?
Would you want to pull them out so that they can be seen at this time?
Well, I think that one of the things the mayor asked is that we stick with, we don't muddy the water.
It's not relevant.
Well, it is relevant. You can look at it, make a comparison, Mr. Destry. It's a beautiful drawing.
I've looked at it.
Well, we just let everyone have a look at it, everyone should have a look.
The board has proved the prints as designed.
I feel like we have looked at that, but I was just curious if the rationale for why we looked at that was because of the needs.
The plans we looked at in 2001 were to build four science classrooms at the front of the building. At that point in time, the state of Tennessee and the city of Elizabeth and both were under the SBC, the standard building code, which was fairly restricted to how you were able to build and add on to non-protected, unsprinkled buildings, which is what TA Dugger is classified as. Recently, the, both the state and the city changed to what's called the International Building Code, which is more lenient in how you can address additions and renovations to unsprinkled, unprotected buildings. The problem with the 2001 plans were the classrooms to avoid having any kind of trigger that caused extra money to be spent bringing you, original building up to fire code was called prohibitive. So the classrooms had to be totally separated, which means a child has to leave the cla- the school building to access these four science classrooms. All those were big issues that the board discussed and discussed and discussed in 2001 and came to the decision that was not the direction to go. When the state and the city changed building code to the International Building Code, we can, in addition to the back of TA Dugger, to address accessibility, to address classroom needs and security for keeping kids inside the classroom building without having to have this extensive trigger to go back all the way through the school building to bring everything up to current fire code, we can separate and compartmentalize the addition to have it meet current codes outside that compartment unless we make significant changes to the original building. It stays as is. That's the, that's the game changer from, from my perspective. And that's what made this current approach practical and feasible. And actually, it's a much better bargain for your money. There's no question.
And I think that's what the board looked at. So, I mean, I, I just didn't want to say that we haven't looked at it because I know you want to see that. I know that that's a goal that the councilman would like to see is that TA Dugger not be left behind. And that's an important thing and we get that. But we did look at it and the, the best way to do it is the way you have it for you. But we can't afford them all. So getting kind of to that point, you know, we've looked at it, we voted it, we're ready. You know, if we want to relook at it, give us some more and we'll look back and say, is there, can we make some of that progress? But with $5 million, what we can do, what we know what we said we could do and would, would do is that we would go ahead and do, you know, the classrooms at the high school because that made sense and it was something that you could put and know that you're not going to get into more costs or be very, very secure in, in how you're going to come out compared to the money you got, that you're going to be able to complete. And that was the goal, the, the, the task force was committed to was, we want to be able to commit to at least two projects, not just one. Not blow $5 million on a stadium. And I say blow because if that's all you got, you, you can't spend it all on a stadium. But at the same time, we can't put a project out that isn't something that our town would be proud of because they elected us to do that, to do something that they could be proud of and live in. And I feel strongly that that's why they live here, is for those types of services that this town provides. Is the, one of the primary reasons that they move here and live here and want us to do a good job. So, but we don't have all the funds, it's not unlimited. So that's kind of what, how we got to where we are now. And we revisit it with more money to do, but right now, that's what we've got, you know? Or what we were told.
Could I, 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 I listened and, uh, in preparing, preparing for the workshop, um, I kind of went back through loose the observations that I had and I, and I came up with some questions, um, that, some of them I know have been answered. Some of them have been answered, but I'd like to hear it again. Um, so it, may I take a few minutes? I'll try not to belabor this because, you know, everybody's time's made. But, I mean, since, since we've gotten to this point, I would like to take a minute. That's, is that okay?
Mm, sir.
Um, uh, um, this kind of goes back to the very original beginning of a capital improvement list, a capital improvement project list, okay? What, what I understand, when, when schools or when a municipality or any entity develops a capital improvement project list, they normally have a set of criteria that they use to score those different projects. And, uh, and that's how they set the priorities. Again, it may be, is it, uh, it may be a mandatory thing. It's just like with, the jail's been thrown out several times. It has nothing to do with this, but that's a mandatory thing. County, county signed a, uh, an agreement to make that happen. Litigation, it had to be done. I mean, that, that bumped it to the top. Security issues, safety issues, program improvement. Um, in other words, there's, there's criteria to, to go through and score different projects. Uh, and to, to me, I mean, I haven't heard that. I mean, if that, did, did y'all go through that process to?
It's been, it's been four years. As you're creating criteria, what do you mean?
Well, ju- just like I'm saying there in the, um, ADA, okay? Is there a regulatory driver for this particular capital project? Is, is, are there safety issues? Are there security issues? Are there structural issues? I mean, there's criteria for scoring projects, yeah.
The point Mr. Weems led us in that endeavor is bringing in structural engineers and people of that nature involved in the stadium and TA Dugger building. Yes, sir. True, yeah. And I'd say we look, we turn this, as Bullard said, we turn this issue on all ends. And so that's why we came to the council originally for the nine, uh, 9.1 million, I think, originally. Uh, we asked for that in advance. When the reference to priority, as I intended to the council, when the question was asked, if we had $3 million, we could do, uh, do the high first rule. That's, we just, we just can't do that because of the limitations. That, that's why we had three things and the priority, I think Mr. Fisher's asked me. And I said, the priority would be TA Dugger number one. And I think the conveyor may comment that, that the priority cannot be necessarily in order which the, the, uh, the building could be completed. And so.
Phasing would have to be part of this. Uh, uh, I mean, may I address this, Mr. Weems? Did, you went through that scoring process for capital improvement for these projects?
I'm not sure what you want me to, what the question is.
I, I'm saying whether, are, does the school board have, um, criteria on which they judge the need for, or priority for a capital improvement project?
That's not an architect question. Uh, that's not an architect question. We respond to the direction of the board. Do we generate a list of criteria to, to judge the school needs by? No, we, we don't.
That's right. You don't. You, you take what those, you take what they give you to.
We respond to their.
We don't actually have like a, a form that we sit there and score things. I mean, Mr. Alexander and his staff are in these buildings all the time. They meet with principals, so.
I, I understand. I'm just saying that.
Yeah, but security and things like that are definitely taken into.
There, there is a process though.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I, can I, I'm, I'm a fucking lady.
You know, am I, am I, am I saying something?
No, no, I understand what you're saying.
No, no, it's just, I think we're talking different terminology, because you're looking at something that's, you know, saying that you have kinda like a form that you go through. Ours is just familiarity with our buildings, because we only have a few buildings, so we know them inside and out. And then you look at what we need, always safety's an issue for us, always. That's why we want to stop building things that aren't attached. So we wanna keep the kids all in one place, uh, making sure like with, uh, having use of that elevator, that's a safety issue. Uh, we want to make sure, we listen to the principals, we find out what do they need.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We, we, all of these pro- all three projects are a priority, but it's all based on funding. Our priorities and our needs are, we know what they are, but it's all based on funding. The original workshop that we had, we were talking, you know, you know, possibly seven point one, it's, you know, and it kinda.
Really, and, and that's what you get into when you don't have hard numbers.
And, and, and that's understandable, but priorities change when the amount of funding becomes a reality.
I think.
We were sitting there that day in that workshop until we knew how much money.
I, I have, I have trouble understanding that a little bit, Phil, because if I have criteria from which I'm judging my capital projects, um, I do that without consideration for the funding. I consider the safety, the security, enhancement of the program. You know, there, there's twenty criteria and they could be weighted differently. Once you have that, then that sets your priorities, and then whatever funding is available, you work, you see what I'm saying, you work from that list.
That's the reason when I was talking about, you know, the projects and trying to complete two of the three projects, TA Dugger and the stadium are linked, simply for the fact that we know what the needs are at TA Dugger. And part of those needs is attention to the stadium, but we know to, to do the addition the proper way and to meet the codes and, and bring everything up to date, it goes in the rear, which does, which impedes and encroaches on the stadium. And in doing so, the stadium's gonna need some attention also, so that's the reason the decision was made to, you know, turn those down and pursue building a new stadium, that's the reason. Yeah, I guess I'm pursuing extra funding so that we can meet the real needs and the real priorities of what we need to do to, that are facing the school system. And a lot of them does evolve around TA Dugger. I'll be the first to agree with it. It, I know that it evolves right there, but in doing so, to do it correctly and to meet the codes and to meet the real needs of the students, you know, the location addition is in the rear of TA Dugger, which encroaches on the stadium, which is in disrepair and needs some attention also. So we're kinda killing two birds with one stone by creating that problem by building this stadium, but, yeah, I guess like I say, there's a, and I agree with you wholeheartedly of a property tax increase. You know, when I was running for school board, I got to talking about these projects, I said it's all based on funding, but I will not ask the council to go and ask the problem. So that's the reason I admire you folks for utilizing half of sales tax, which was intended for capital projects for the school system.
And I think, you know, it gets back to your question about another mega, another million and a half. And Jerome's saying, right now, I mean, well, we can't, if it was seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, that won't, we can't get that. Have we ever gotten that?
If we go to a million, maybe we can make that work. And, and I think once we give some real direction to the committee of what projects we're actually committed to do.
Because we've already done.
I think there's, you know, we've done that, but, but we kinda changed gears on that. I think once we make it, maybe we'll have some.
I tell you, I've got a little bit of a heartburn with that too, okay? Because if I want to, if I want to donate, uh, to the school system for improvement and betterment of our school system, uh, I don't, I, I don't wanna hang this fruit out here and say, you do what I want you to do, you'll get it. If you don't, you ain't getting it, okay? That's, you know.
I agree.
You know what I'm saying? Well, but I know human nature and stuff, that, that, that's another issue, but, um, you know, if, if you ask for another million, do you think you can get a million in donations?
It's possible.
I don't know.
Yeah.
According to the audit, you hardly have how much donation in hand.
Well, no one's gonna donate until they know how much money that we've got.
You don't think that?
Oh, but we've done more, maybe though, who knows?
Uh, yeah, we, that's a, that's a no-no.
That's a no-no. We can't plan on it.
You know, I mean, we can't make our plans accordingly.
I, I understand, and, and, you know, um, I, I don't know. I depend on folks like Jerome and, uh, Mr. Kessler, financial folks, and I, I don't think it would be, it's, it's wise for the city to, um, to spend everything the particular tax can bring in right now, because there's too many variables out there. I mean, I'm, I'm hoping more than anybody that the economy picks up and everything goes well, but if somebody decides tomorrow they wanna fly a plane into the White House or something, I mean, everything's off, you know? And if we planned and obligated that money, Jerome says where's it's gonna come from, and our only option is to raise property tax. Now, well, a- a- and we don't either. I mean, I don't, I don't mind, uh, asking folks to support, uh, the community, but as far as the city goes, my sense is we have some severe infrastructure problems that have been, um, mandated or less over the years, we're losing more than half of our water right now. I mean, that's, that's one issue. Our, our street paving has been gutted and we've practically done nothing for several years. I mean, that, uh, that, those need some attention, and at least we have the half-cent sales tax that could go for the schools right now. I agree totally with you. Schools, uh, as, and, as a bedroom community, we, we need to be the best bedroom community that we can be, and schools are on that. But there's some other, other things we need to, to be that good bedroom. But, uh, well, you've answered my question, and I didn't wanna get off onto, uh, uh, you had a process, but it's not a, a real formalized process to come up with the.
Yeah, I wanted to answer to that, 'cause I don't think there was a regulatory, from what I found, there wasn't a regulatory requirement that you have a certain process.
Oh, no.
But we did follow a process, and I know that we had multiple spreadsheets with things listed that were prioritized. I know that there were lots of meetings, and just like you, we rely on Jerome, you know, we rely on Mr. Alexander and his team to tell us where those needs are highest. And then we did tours together with you guys as well, where we looked at the needs of the infrastructure that, that we support. But, and I'm sensitive to what you said, by the way. You know, we need, we need sidewalks and parks and roads and water and electrical power, and that's why we wanna work with you.
Well, and that's, I think that's the council's, uh, uh, concern is that uh, we don't wanna stretch ourselves so thin that if, if, uh, something happens that we can't meet and our only option is that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Jerome, uh, we've obligated the seven hundred and twenty thousand, that's the number we work with, but if we collect over that, does that still not go to the school? Because.
Just for the next, from what, what time period?
In two thousand eight, it was obligated for ten years, right? Or two thousand six, it hasn't, that, that sales tax option has not been actually formally extended. To the, the whole amount is not. Of course, the city's obligated for the bond payment, but the entire amount has not been. I, I think in two thousand six, it was extended ten years. So two thousand sixteen, unless the council moves to give the full amount, then at two thousand sixteen, we would obviously have the remaining amount.
But the way I look at that is, to me, it is obligated as long as we've got bond payments outstanding for the city. And, I mean, if we vote today.
No, but nothing formal.
Well, I know, but if we voted today to lock that in for ten years, the next city council could come back and, and vote to change it. So as long as you've got bond payments, to me, that's, that's as good as dedicated to the school system, I think.
In the past, what we have done with the excess money is we have put it back into the schools, uh, simply because it's there and use it.
And I, I don't think anybody can argue that, and, and that, this is all the red herrings that came out at that city council meeting. I don't, there's, is there anybody here that doesn't think we have great kids, great schools, great teachers, great programs, championship bands, championship? There's no disagreement there, and Kurt said that. But the problem, and we're focusing on it tonight, trying to, i- is the funding, the funding. Where's the money coming from? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Would you feel comfortable with spending the five million dollars as the board is voting for, that y'all have in hand now for the projects to be voted for?
Let me, let me rephrase that just a little bit. But there's been, there's been five million dollars already out there, and we've got two projects, and we realize that some of it, there's gonna be some excess money. If we can go ahead and do the two projects that have been recommended and take that excess money and start setting it aside for the TA Dugger project in the near future as soon as we can go back and revisit.
Which is what the committee said.
Uh, hopefully, you know, we don't know, the county has, school system has some infrastructure needs and stuff, and if they end up going to the bond market in the future, then we will receive some of those monies, because we're city taxpayers that also pay county taxes, so we reap some of those tax dollars also. So there's a lot of things that can happen, and I know that, that your concern was to make sure that there was attention to the future of TA Dugger, and then that was the committee's record. We really, really paid over this, as you know, we don't wanna leave any of these three projects out in the cold whatsoever. We wanna complete two of these projects now with the monies that have been made available to us, with the hopes that, you know, with your conservative approach, that there will be some excess, and hopefully with this investment into our community, our community will continue to grow, and our sales tax will grow, and with that, our half-cent sales tax grows, maybe that seven eighty turns into eight hundred thousand, and, and next thing, you know, we've got enough money to, to make a fit, and then by then, we will already have the stuff in place to tear the old grandstands down, to move forward with TA Dugger and to complete the third and last project, and then after we get done, who's to know, the next school board and the next council pays for some other capital needs in the school system, so.
We can't handicap, we can't lock ourselves in worried about, you know, I, and I understand there is a, we have a fiscal responsibility to plan ahead, but we can't sit there and be so scared about what's out there that we don't act now, because that's, that's.
But you have to be wise about acting now.
And that's what we, but that's why we spent all these years doing this.
And that's what I'm, that's your responsibility and that's our responsibility, and we're all trying to meet our responsibilities, and that's why.
But one of the things that I'm concerned about.
Some things have gotten totally.
Well, one of the things that we're concerned about is that the money is there. We have a plan in place, the board's voted on it. We feel really strong that we have two really good projects ready to go. We just need to be able to take one.
Okay, let me, let me kind of address that too, okay? And, um, and I can just speak for myself. Uh, this, well, I guess now I'm into my second year on the council. But when we had our workshop in August, September, when it, when it, when we had our.
It met in the spring. It was like, uh, April or May. The joint workshop, that was April or May.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That was while you all were preparing your budget for the, can you remember presenting our capital projects for the process?
There may have been a miscommunication, because as far, for myself, for myself, when I left the workshop, my sense was that, uh, the TA Dugger project and the, the high school band and classrooms were, were gonna be, um, taken care of first, and what was left would go to an athletic complex. Now, again, that may have been my take on what was said, and I may have missed, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm a human.
We talked, yeah, we talked about that, but again, at that meeting, if you will try to remember, we've always said we have to move the stadium first, because that's key.
Well, may I, may I ask a question about that also?
Yes.
Um, and because, and it may just have been in the material I had, and you guys have been at this and had much more thorough discussions, but, uh, um, was the possibility floated or and shot down as far as swapping sides? In other words, taking the existing home stands down and taking the existing vis- visitor sta- uh, stands down, making the visitor, present visitor side the home side?
You have, uh, we actually, during this committee, the mayor asked us to have Mr. Williams do a study, and you had, we gave that to you back in the fall. It was gonna cost three point five million just to put, uh, Brown Children's Stadium, what you're talking about doing?
Yes.
Because once we start, if we touch Brown Children's Stadium, everything has to be up to code, which means we have to renovate everything. So we could put three and a half million into Brown Children's Stadium just to make it what it is right now.
Would, no, it would be a lot less.
Lot less, you're exactly right. But it would just be a place to have a ballgame, so we would spend.
No, no, I, I, tell me, 'cause I'm not really following that.
Mr. Williams, do you want to talk about how much it was gonna cost to, uh, renovate Brown Children's and get it up to code?
It was three and a half million to remove the home stands on the south side of the stadium, upgrade the original stands, which are currently visitor stands, on the north side of the stadium, add a press box, update, upgrade the concession facilities, toilet room facilities, um, address the site costs that go with those changes, three and a half million. Uh, you still would have a track that's not NCAA reg- or, uh, T double, uh, double S double A regulation.
Could I stop you right there? Sure. The plans that are in place now, is the track included in that?
No.
No, sir. But there is a track on the high school campus, uh, that does meet T double S double A layout regulations. It needs to be surfaced, it needs work, but there is a track there, and the one issue about the current master plan for the high school is it doesn't remove the baseball field, it doesn't remove the track that's already there. So those things that you've already paid money for can still be used. They do need attention. The track, obviously, if you walked on that track, it needs attention, but you do have a track. So that's, I think that's the, the one aspect of this whole process and going through it, and I, somebody said three years, I think it's longer than three years. But we've looked at, I've at ten different positions and arrangements on that campus for a stadium, uh, that includes a track, doesn't include a track, uh, we, we've looked, I think, every possibility that has been brought forward, has been reviewed in great detail. And this one seems to be the one that so far has gotten the most support. I understand the funding is a different issue, but as far as addressing physical concerns, this plan seems to be the one that hits the mark.
And also one of the things that the band brought to our attention that I had never considered, that every game for our band and every game for Coach Witten is an away game, because they have to load up all their stuff, drive it to Brown Children's Stadium, regardless if it's a home or a away game, those parents are there for an hour and a half prior to and after.
And I appreciate that, I really do, but I'm gonna voice some things that I've heard. We've been doing that for how many years?
Forty.
Forty years, and we have a, a state, a tri- tri- a triple state championship band, and we have a championship football team with, with the facilities that we have now. That's credit to the teachers, coaches, parents, and students, okay? That doesn't, facility, you can have nice facilities, but if you don't have the tradition and the love for the school and the support from the community, I, I mean, that, that's a big part of that too, okay? So, and I'm just saying, you know, if somebody says, well, we've been doing that for forty years, we've got championship things now, what do we get out of something new?
We say that just because what was good enough for me when I graduated, and I'm not telling you what year I graduated, and if Grover does, I'm gonna smack him because he loves to do that. What's good enough for me isn't good enough for these kids. My kids, your kids, these kids deserve better. We have an opportunity right now to give our kids better, and that's something that you can look at.
I interrupted you one thing. The word deserve, deserve, deserve.
And there's nothing wrong with the word deserve.
Oh, I know, I know. You know, I deserve a Cadillac, but by gosh, I can't get one.
But right now we can. But right now we have a plan in place to do it. And we've waited forty years, and all the boards and all the councils before, before us let it go, and here we are. We have the memes, uh, Miss, uh, oh goodness, uh, Manuel brought up at the council meeting, and something I never thought about. All those folks that are there to watch their kids perform, and they're on the visitor's side, because there's no room on the home side. And those folks have earned the right to have a spot on home sides to watch their kids. What we're doing, and I know we can argue this all day.
No, no, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to argue.
But you know, the thing about it is.
Issues that I've heard.
And we all have heard those. Absolutely.
It's, 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 John, it's John and Ashley here.
Of course they're here, and this has been streamed too, so.
I'd like to address one concern that you had, Jeff. Back to the workshop that we had back in, in the spring, that you left there thinking, you know, classroom, classroom, I wanted.
And then we voted, okay.
No, we didn't think about that, no.
No, 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 no. The council then voted.
But, but when I left that meeting the same day with, I hope not some miscommunication or things of that nature, is that we wanted nine million, but we left there thinking, what a possibility of seven point one. I left there thinking, seven, it may be a little less than that, but then we all shut up, we got five million. So there I had to rethink my whole process because of the funding.
The funding.
So, I mean, I was.
my whole process because of the funding. So, I mean, I was, I, I think.
Which is what the issue is. It's not whether it's.
Yeah, and we all know what we want, what we need, and, and what we all think's best. But I left that meeting that day also expecting, or not expecting, hoping that the funding was gonna be available to do TA Dugger and the stadium. And so, so we all left there that day with high hopes.
Yeah, and that is probably what brings us where we are now.
And it's like something Mr. Carter made a comment one day, and when we were on our committee meetings, and, and he was very sincere. He felt like these projects had been diluted somewhat. Well, I felt the same word was necessary. The money, funding had been diluted somewhat from our perspective. And no blame of anybody. It's not a fault of anybody's.
We didn't have numbers.
Well, but we, but that day, you know, I basically said until we have some numbers to work with, it's hard for us to put these projects in perspective as to what is, or a real possibility of completing. And through a lot of process, here we are, that was May, I guess, and here we are, it's almost February, and we've come a long ways. And we've had a lot of conversation and we've gathered a lot of information. And with the five million dollars, the two projects that the committee recommended is the best option to complete two of the projects with the funding and, and try to stay in the budget. And, and that's still gonna be real tight to accomplish what we want to accomplish.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask you because I don't know, in some of the information I got, that, I, I know the committee's recommendation was not to exceed three point five million of the bond issue for the stadium and not to exceed one point five for the band.
Correct.
Um, but were there not cost estimates that exceed that?
Well, well, they, they, his, the estimate is like four million to four point two million. But until we actually bid these things out, we don't know where we're at, and there's a good possibility, we may have to whittle some of the bells and whistles out of our projects to.
But not much.
And you may get donations.
But we're hoping that maybe a donation or two will help us get, put some of those things back that we couldn't. But, you know, until we actually bid, we're hoping that when these bids hit the streets, there'll be some hungry contractors and some people that should.
Because I think that happened with the previous bond issue and the classrooms. I think they got more for the money than they were expecting because some of, some of the bids, some of the bids and the classrooms came in under what was projected. So, but until we actually get some plans and some drawings out there and put them out there for people to bid on, we don't know what the final number's gonna be. And then when those bids come back, you know, man, that's way over what we anticipated. We've got this. We may have to whittle away. And then somebody said, well, to add that back, we'll contribute. Well, maybe if you get what you try to halt.
Jeff, can I say something that might make you feel better? Um, this administration, uh, it's the same administration that did the project back in two thousand and eight, when we got the first one. And we gave the council a bucket list of projects. Uh, East Side was not on that list. Uh, so we get in there, we do the addition at West Side. We did, uh, the elevator and roof at Harold McCormick. We did windows at East Side. We did, um, uh, the, um, change that, uh, walkway at, at the high school. We made it a safe, a safe entrance. And then, you know, we look and we have quite a bit of money unexpected. So, we moved East Side from a five year, three to five years down the road over. Now, that wasn't on the list given to council. And we had some spirited discussions with council members because that wasn't on there, uh, had not been approved. But they trusted us that we knew that that was the right thing to do. And I think Dr. Wondell, I don't know if he's still here, yeah, if you guys hadn't had that, I mean, we were able to go back and build a gym and an addition there because we recognized, you're never gonna get this money again. And, uh, it was tough because, I mean, you know, we argued and stuff, but they, they gave us the funds and trust us, trusted us to do that. One of the things I want council to take comfort in, the same folks that led that, uh, capital project are still here. So.
And I understand, and I appreciate that. Uh, and, uh, just, just like with the, uh, deserve kind of thing, the trust, I, I don't have any problem with trusting, uh, our administration. Because like I said, I think what has happened here is we both had different thoughts of what we came out of there with, you know? Uh, no, no, I, I mean, uh, and that's, councils can trust, but the people trust you too, okay? They, they, that's why they elected you to do those things. They elected us to, to fund the things that you give us as best we can.
There has to come a point where you're gonna have to release it and let us run with it.
And I want, and I wanted to address Ed there because you asked me, you know, would I, yeah, would I, and I think I told Rita, I may have told you too, Phil, what, what would make me comfortable, uh, is, is a little more, um, substance to the, um, uh, to the TA Dugger, how, how we're actually gonna deal with that. Um, um, I mean, to, it bothered me because the thing about going back to the bond market in thirty-five years, at least from what I understand, that's really not realistic, okay? I mean, it, it may happen. Like you say, we don't know what the future is, but to be, um, I hesitate to use, we're conservative, but to be judicious with our planning and our obligation of, you know, for, for our debt, um, we, we do need to, um, not use everything that we could. I mean, if we get it, we use it. Uh, uh, the, uh, the excess, something you mentioned, the, if, 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 that would help me, you know? And, and, and I, I don't even say, you know, if you, if you take fifty percent or seventy-five percent of what comes in over that, uh, our, our bond payment and set that aside. Because you may have other things. I understand that. Don't want, don't want to tie your hands. Uh, but that, that's what, and I tried to say that at the council meeting that night, but I don't think I said it very well.
One of the things I want you to know is that for all of us, I believe we're not gonna rest until TA Dugger or E, or the high school, whichever project doesn't get finished. I'm on this board for two more years. Uh, we have elections coming up in November. We're gonna, you know, I mean, I don't know, Chris Armstrong, Miss Baker, they may run again, they may not. I don't know. Uh, in two years, the three of us are up. All of us are up again, you know, at different times. And, uh, as far, as long as I'm on this board, whichever project isn't finished is still on the horizon. And it will not, I mean, I, that's kind of one of those things. I'm not gonna, um, and let that go.
And that kind of gives me some assurance too, as far as the, when I was asking about the criteria that you're using. Okay, uh, without a formal process, you still have made that determination. Those are the three. Yeah. Um.
We've already done it many, many times.
I'm, I'm, I'm all right with that. But again, what I would like to see, is I know we can't, I wish we could do all three. I wish we could give you, you know, if, if we, if we get some growth and have some development here where we, uh, where we expand our, our tax base, you know, we, we could do that. But that, we've got to all work for that.
And a very visible part of that is an athletic com- complex, but a classroom is not gonna be very visible to draw people in, is my point. Something I want you to take home is, so as part of funding TA Dugger, when people see a very visible and vibrant and active and growing school system, and that's very visible, that draws more people in to do those things. Now, I did wanna.
They're past the new stadium, but they look across the street and see like a lift, the Bimber building from the Bimber.
Yeah. Well, where they see the property tax. So, that's the reason why we're wanting to understand. I do understand the funding part. I did wanna say, because I had heard the rumor that there were those who said we deceived city council. And I think that's not you or I having this discussion. But it very, make it very clear, there was never an intent to deceive our priority list. In that meeting, like Phil, I came away thinking, hey, we could do this with seven point one. We've got all these and we'll prioritize. And I remember stating, just, I, I don't know who I was looking at at the time, but one of you, we were talking, I said, if you give us the money, we will sit down and we'll do the hard work of prioritizing. Because we were originally asking for nine, we were down to seven, and then came back to six, six, and thought it was gonna be six point six, and it dropped all the way to five. And at that point, I was very disheartened because I thought there is no way we can do this. And at that point, I thought the stadium would cost five million alone. And knowing that the order would require it, because we had looked and looked and looked, would require that Brown Children's have significant renovation to it, i.e. removing the stands in order to be able to do the things that were necessary, I knew right then that we might not be able to actually do anything beyond that. Well, I was very thankful to see that we were able to find a way to whittle and cut. But at the same time, I had people coming up to me too and say, well, don't water it down or don't, you know, do this. And so, when you mentioned the track earlier, I needed to go on the record at least and say, that was probably one of the things that really, because I was a track person and my kids were a track. And I know lots of people, but I had to turn loose about it because it adds a lot of money. It adds a million dollars to have a track in there. And people ask me all the time if we're cutting something out. And maybe I, I had to make that hard cut in my mind to let it happen. But there's another reason.
I may, I may not be able to get the remote starter on my Cadillac.
That's right. Well, but it may be even better because the remote starter, when it has a lot of problems with it, you don't want the remote starter. And what we found is we started exploring and whittling, and through process like this, we learn into, we, we learn certain things. What we found was that the science hill stadium was unhappy. The people who go there and those who had attended it said, they put their big track there, and because you have to make it regulation, you have to have all this room for shot put and field events. And because you have to have multiple lanes and lots of room, you're so far away from the field that you have to raise your stands up higher, which is more costly. You have to look down on the field from a further distance. And people didn't feel the intimacy with the game that they felt at Brown Children's. And so, after I thought about it, I thought, well, you know, sometimes God works in mysterious ways. And when we looked at, well, what would it cost? Because I still don't wanna leave the track out. I think that, but you've got the, you've got the other track out there, and it could be resurfaced for a whole lot more cost efficient way rather than putting it in around the ring. And then it opens up another possibility. When you do that, when you put it out there, you have a, a separate practice field so you can preserve your turf or whatever you use for a longer duration. So, you're not always practicing on your game field. You can also practice multiple teams. Or if you host a band competition, they've got a staging area, and they've got a lot of field area. And you don't tear it up at all so that you don't lose the functionality now. And you can still host a car show because it's not on a, something you're gonna, you know, break down. And you can feel good about letting them come out there and drive on it and please your citizens who really enjoy being able to host those other things around Relay for Life and bring more attention to the school system by outsiders again, who then see what a great place it is. So, I actually thought, you know, this is actually a good thing that we're not putting the track, but my heart still wants to have funding for that. And it'll be two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand to resurface it probably or more. Two hundred, I don't remember exactly, but it would have been a million to put it in the, around there. And so, roughly a million dollars more to put it inside of there and then make everything else work with that in there. And so, because I have had people come and ask me, is that a watered down thing? You took the track out. It looks like you're cheapening your project. And in a sense, I feel like we are. But in another sense, I feel like maybe for a good reason. That's cost effective.
And I'll just be honest with you. I mean, and I appreciate the passion of the people who spoke at the, the council meeting. And there was some comments that made it, if we do this, we wanna do it right. We don't want another half finished project. I, I come back, no. We, but we, if we can't have the Cadillac, let's, let's have a.
Dependable car.
Let's have a, you know, a Ford hybrid or something, okay? Uh, we may not be able to afford everything.
That's what our thinking is. If we, if it's gonna cost three hundred and fifty, if it's gonna cost three point five million just to get, to renovate Brown Children's, and it's not even gonna be as nice as it is now, I'm using nice very generously, for three and a half million, let's go build a nice place at the high school with more room. That gives us room to grow.
And I'll be honest with you. That, that's what you guys do. That's not what we do. Okay? Uh, and, uh, uh, but I did wanna say, or something else. It'll come back. Ed, do you ever have those moments?
I don't.
Not that much. I, I, I think I've, I think I've got my questions answered. And I think, uh, I appreciate.
And if you think of something, would you get home, you know, or follow whatever, please call us or.
And, and I think, I, I think I've communicated, I hope I've communicated what, what my, you know.
Concern.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Do you want to else have any?
Sure. Yeah, keep doing your thing quick.
Well, I know, I'm about to play mercy tonight.
We gotta get our stuff, coaches up to, uh, Johnson County.
Have Johnson County.
Oh, boy. We use your box.
Super is close right now, so you don't have to go up there and eat.
I have one short comment.
Really?
You promise?
I won't be thirty minutes, Ed.
I didn't do all the time.
But I think it's, the projects as presented by the school board and by the capital committee, sometimes we have been, we've been looking at the, the big parts of those two projects, which are obviously the sports complex and the band room. If they s- and, you know, you hear a lot about classrooms at TA Dugger or classrooms in general. But they are four, four, count them, four academic classrooms gonna be at Elizabethan High School. And from my perspective and my experience, which is, it can be very limited, I guess, as far as from the educational side. But if we have an influx of county students, a lot of times that, obviously, they, the administrations have worked on getting them into the school system young, at a younger age in elementary school. But we'll also get an, an influx of county students entering and into the high school level, which that is where we will need additional classrooms, I think, as well. And I think if we should have the top notch high school. And, you know, sometimes we don't, we either don't listen or, or we just don't know, or it's just kind of, uh, doesn't get the focus of our mind about the classrooms at Elizabethan High School. Sometimes that's been looked over. And I just wanted to make that point, that with the projects as presented, that will fit the budget, that the bond proceeds that we already have, uh, that they are four academic classrooms gonna be at Elizabethan High School.
Music room would count as a classroom. So, we can add that. The music room would count as a classroom.
Well, a lot of things have been misconstrued about, you know, music being academics. Well, you know, of course, I can't carry it to in a bucket, so I'm not, I mean, I'd be, some people don't see that as academic, which obviously, it is a whole part of, whether it's football or choir or band, or it's all part of the.
Mr. Elliot referred to the mixed stadium as an outdoor classroom. And his group spends a lot of time outdoors preparing for their competitions and their Friday night performances. And he looks at that as an outdoor classroom.
Richard, before, before that thought leaves me again, do you mind if I just take one, I, I'll throw the question out. You don't even have to answer right now.
No, I'm not wasting some time.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, the home stands at the, at TA Dugger now, uh, if, if, uh, you know, as if we, if the, um, plan is presented, we, we move that direction, uh, those stands, are they too unsafe to use? Uh, uh, I, I guess that was my question. Are they gonna be condemned? Or do they need to be condemned? Or are we gonna continue to use those? Or?
You're talking about the home stands?
Yes, or the home sides.
He had structured in the year to check that. And the answer to that is the structure, the structure itself, unlike what Harry found in the other side, that's for laundry. This is cinder block, not Miss Wayne. And what has happened is the water has treated it with cinder block. So, the question is, they're gonna have to be torn apart, uh, to be rebuilt. And so, the answer to that is they have to go.
Okay. And we're, and we're not gonna continue, I mean, continue, okay, gotcha.
We'll next year, we're gonna be active.
I got you. That's, thank you. Sorry. Is anybody else?
Yes, I have one or two comments. Now, I had a lot I wanted to say, but time is, is running out. As you can see, I've noted here. And I know y'all are ready to go. So, I'll, I'll just try to hit my little highlights very quickly. First of all, our first objective was TA Dugger. And the second was classrooms. And of course, we do have plans for Harold McCormick, which is not even on the table. That gym is separated. We looked at the safety for that. We talked about closing that in. Um, there's like, um, I believe Mr. Weems made about four different models for Harold McCormick. Um, we also have teachers at all, three of the schools that, well, all five really, that need classrooms. And of course, being an old teacher, my first priority was. And of course, being an old teacher, my first priority was classrooms. And I stated that when I voted for it because I said, um, the agreement that came to us was stadium and classrooms at, uh, the high school. So that's why I supported one, but I did state when I voted that I preferred classrooms. And the reason being is that in order for our students to compete on the national level, and in order to have the equipment and the things that we need, that's my first priority. And of course, my, my good board members, of course, they, they outvoted us and said, and we go with the majority. Again, I would prefer, looking, just like we had to look several different ways in order to place that stadium at the high school, because our goal at first was, it was gonna be stand at TA Dugger. Then all of a sudden, there was a new view. I'd like for us to look, zero in and look at TA Dugger, and see if we can find some other options to place those classrooms as opposed to having to tear it down, that older stadium. And have several different groups, I, I appreciate Mr. Wing's opinion. And it's just that, you know, when you go to have house repairs, or you go to purchase things, you don't do it with the first shopping cart, that you have four or five people, you want the best price, you want the most for your money. May not value the lowest price, but it's the best. And we may end up paying a little more, but we may get what we want. And we may can get that TA Dugger classrooms. And there's a, a space between the library and the main building, maybe we can close it in there. We, we looked, finally looked at all our options with the stadium, and we decided the high school was the best. And I say, let's look at that and see if we can find some options with our TA Dugger. And see if we can't, can't do that, because there is a tremendous need there for the classrooms and for the building. And we do have a lot of growth in our schools. All three of our elementary schools are in need, but, um, Harold McCormick, uh, they did get the roof and the elevator, but they really need classrooms, they need that include, close between the gym and the building for safety. And as well as to keep down the flu bug out there. And I know about that, and how long they have to stay here. And I do care tremendously about our funds that are laying there, but I do want us to use them to the very best of our abilities. And see how they fumble off.
Does anyone else have anything before we? What, what direction are we gonna move on there?
Well, what, and that's what I was just, nobody had any, I was just gonna kinda, kinda wrap it up and just, first of all, thank everybody once again, because before tonight, there were a lot of misconceptions, a lot of things have been said by both sides, you know? That this would be, you know, the city councils against this, or the school boards against this. And that's really what I wanted to put to rest today, was that, you know, nobody's against, or I shouldn't say nobody, we're not against an athletic complex. You know, this became, you know, after the meeting last, our last city council meeting, I got a couple texts saying, you know, you're against this, you, you know, y'all lied, or did this, no. We're trying to figure out, you know, the best, you know, my whole goal was not to vote for or against the stadium, it was having a plan for TA Dugger. And that was what I think, you know, counsel from the feeling I got for counsel, that was the concern. It wasn't that anybody was lied, and you know, believe me, deferring a vote on something is always, always, always better than voting something down because we didn't have the, the support, I guess. Well, the answer's we, and that's what, I really appreciate everyone coming tonight to get. I feel, you know, compromise was the goal of this workshop. Nobody's gonna get everything they want. You know, if I had won the Powerball, you know, I'd write a check and this would all be done, and we wouldn't have to worry about it. Because I've spent more time as mayor discussing school system, stuff that I've ever discussed on the, on city council issues. And then that's not a bad thing, because we do have a great school system, and Jeff hit that, you know, we've talked about how great the students, teachers, staff, administration, all these other things, and we knew all that. Our goal here, though, was not to discuss that, it was say, okay, we know we need this, we know we need this, we know we can do this. Now, let's find a plan to do the final piece of this puzzle. And that was my goal tonight, and I think council's goal was to, to come up with that plan, and you know, I, and I feel comfortable in the answers here. And, you know, I know we can't do it all, you know, we, we just can't. You know, and in five years, we may not be able to do it all, but I would like, you know, if the county does do something, you know, we will get some funds, you know, I would just ask, you know, let's, because I'm gonna be gone when that happens, but, you know, let's, let's consider TA Dugger, because that is a priority, it is, it is a.
That'll be our next call.
A tremendous facility, yeah, you know, but I just wanted to clear it up, that this is not a for a stadium or against a stadium type of thing. You know, I've been underneath that stadium, I've seen the crumbling, I mean, my little girl crawls around on the stands, and when she pulls her hands up, you know, concrete comes off on her hands, that's, if my back porch did that or some, I would be kinda concerned about that. You know, it is problematic, and, you know, with Mr. Wing's help, we saw that redoing TA Dugger was not a feasible option. And, you know, this is, this is, you know, I guess, hurt, I guess, some people's, you know, friendships or whatever. And it just doesn't need to do that. This, these projects need to bring this community together, because we're still, you know, and I know Mr. Alexander and I get heated. You know, we talk to each other and, you know, but I never take personal offense to that, you know? I've, I've been on the record many times, Ed Alexander's one of the best teachers I've ever had in my life. I mean, he was a lot younger back then, and, you know? But, you know, it takes those, those types of discussions and agree, or disagreements and heated moments, I think, to, to have something great on the other side. You know, so I will finish up by saying, if I have hurt somebody's feelings in this whole thing, it was not intentional. My job is to be the best steward of the resources I can be, and make sure that we leave this place better than we found it when we were elected. And I, and I think we're well on the way, so. With that being said, I have nothing else to say, if, if anyone else has something.
I've got two things. Donors, get your checkbooks, Sam. And, uh, um, we got a vision for the community, okay? We want, we wanna be a good bid with me, we, we wanna do those things to make Elizabethan, not Cowtown, but be a place to live in East Tennessee.
And we should all be very proud that we are making an investment in our community and our children. And that's one of the most important things that I think we can invest in, in a community such as ours, is, is, is our children. I think we should all be pleased and proud of that.
That's been very helpful. Uh, these are the kinds of dialogues that are helpful when we sit around a work table.
It's always better than, he said, she said, it's by the time it gets to the restaurant.
You know, Kurt, one of the things that we ought to consider doing is just about five a year.
Not on Friday night at five o'clock.
Uh, well, we'll work around Dr. May's schedule.
Where are those babies in the middle of the night?
I know they were at eight last night.
You know, y'all.
I'm, I'm with you, let's have the next meeting there, yeah.
We need a bigger one than that.
But that's all I had, and, you know, if there's anything else, anyone else has, you know, everyone has my, well, believe me, I know many people have my number and my email, because that's been proven.
If you don't have it, I'll give it to you.
Yeah, Richard, if not, it's on Facebook where Richard put everybody. That's all I have, I appreciate you coming, and I thank y'all very much, and I guess we're finished.